Would anyone like to move to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. Thank you. So the move to approve the agenda has been made by Chris, seconded by Holly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? So our first action item is policy review. Mr. Coles.
Thank you Chair. I will only today that I did not get a chance to review these before the meeting. The day kind of got away from us and cabinet. But these are pretty straightforward changes. The first policy up for first reading is GBL personnel records. You'll see that in the third paragraph, it's the addition of a footnote. Number one, they're changing personnel to human resources. That's a recommendation the committee suggests accepting. You'll see the footnote at the bottom includes former employees when it comes to personnel records. The date is updated as well on page one down to the bottom left. You also see some wording change in number seven to employees directed by the Human Resources Director may use and inspect personnel records with or when there is a legitimate official purpose. There's language change there. Number nine has some language change and suggested the committee is suggesting accepting that as well. Number 10 is an addition, so it changed the numbering. And then number 11 is a new, is new as well, the changing order of those there. Okay. So the, the policy committee is recommending that we adopt those changes. If you're ready, I can move on to JB, or if you have questions, we can stop there. Sure.
Number nine, maybe it's highlighted because there's two Rs for records. The records.
Oh.
Records should be lowercase.
Oh pardon me.
That's what that grade is.
That is what that grade is.
That's what that grade is.
Okay. Are you going to give us any further?
The equal educational opportunity, very few changes. Gender identity was suggested to be added. The committee has suggested adopting that. What didn't happen with our upload in our copies here, we have the number one footnote struck. That didn't make this. The committee, the OSBA recommends striking that. We're recommending the same thing. I'm not sure why this copy got uploaded there. So one struck and then two would be added and it would be one.
So we're replacing?
We're replacing, yes. So. Oh, I see.
So we wouldn't use sexual orientation anymore?
Is that what you were saying? Yes.
No, you would, it would.
It's included, it's included.
Yes, if you look up in the definition, it's included up there. So the footnote is no longer needed with gender identity added in. So there you go.
I just got that.
Yes.
So sexual orientation. Gender identity.
Correct.
And I'm just checking the ORs as you're in the bottom now.
Yes.
Hi. Come on in. I'm not like your dad.
I think, yes, as well.
Well, I already said my.
Holly, have you got yours first?
I haven't gotten mine done because I don't know my password. And I did not write that one down today. So, but I will know how to do it now that I have a password to the access. To, no, to my, you know. Because it's just logged in.
Oh, okay.
So I won't do that right now. But I, but I'll know how to do it once, now that I know, I need to do it. I'll just go do it.
Okay.
And then Amanda, you got yours now, Chris?
Um, I'm just gonna do it right now.
Okay, and then.
Wait, because Sarah's already done her.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so we do have a recommended action for.
Well, it's just a first, it's a first.
It's a first reading.
It's gonna go to consent agenda?
Oh, so, thank you. Moving on to the budget committee appointments. Basically, at our, it was two meetings ago, we asked Sean and Kathy if they would review our applications and choose our committee members. So do you guys want to share?
Yeah, so we reviewed each application, put them all together. And then Kathy made phone calls to each of these candidates and asked a series of questions that we had developed. And then she reported back to me, you know, tell me, you know, some of the conversations and whatnot. And we came up with three recommended people. Kathy, do you want to fill in more details?
Just that they were, every candidate was extremely qualified. Several with a lot of really, you know, deep financial or financial depth. And then, you know, others that didn't have that depth, but just, you know, well-rounded business people in the community. So we couldn't have gone wrong. Just to confirm and clarify, one of the candidates did withdraw because they weren't available for May 12th. So we thought to ask everybody's availability, so there was just the five to choose from.
So who, who was it?
Justin Holson, he was leaving that day for vacation.
Because I was, in fact, I had a question about, because Justin's been on the budget committee before, so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we did go through.
Okay.
Oh, oh, but, but eligibility, sorry. Oh, yeah, eligibility requirements, that they must live within the district, and of course, all candidates did. Candidates may not be an officer or employee of the district. All of them are employed outside of the district. And the candidate must be registered voter in the district. I don't know if there's a way for us to check on that.
I don't know, why don't we know my district?
They, we, we had verified that when they put their name.
Oh, you did, okay, so you did verify, perfect. So all of them verified. And of course, Justin Olson rescinded his application. And so we're looking at the five. And out of the five, we selected three. John Harstock, who was a former board member. Rebecca Gordon, who is a, of course, for a mortgage company.
And on several other boards.
Yep. And then Nicholas McWilliams, who's the CFO of the Portland Clinic. So possibly.
So are these all one-year appointments? I don't remember what the cycle is. These are all?
These are full-term appointments.
Which is how, I don't remember how long.
I believe it's three years.
Oh, three years.
Yeah. So we'll do three this year, two next year, and then two a year after that, and then we'll be back to three.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a recommended action.
And does it matter what order they're in, one, two, or three? Are they just, those positions will be on the cycle for them?
Yeah.
Do, do we have to do each one individually stated? Okay, so I'll, I'll just read them.
Yeah, okay.
Move to accept the recommendation to appoint Becca Gordon to position one on the Gresham Barlow School District Budget Committee. Move to accept the recommendation to appoint John Harstock to position two on the Gresham Barlow School District Budget Committee. And move to accept the recommendation to appoint Nick McWilliams to position three on the Gresham Barlow School District Budget Committee.
Second.
Okay, so the recommended action has been made by Kathy, seconded by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any one opposed? Okay, so we have.
And could you, Myra, just because we're recording it and Sarah's not here, could you just repeat that to make sure everybody heard who we just voted on?
The recommended action? So we are placing position, for position one, we have Rebecca Gordon for position two. John Harstock, and for position three, Nick McWilliams.
Okay, thank you.
Those are our three budget committee members.
Okay. And then will someone contact them now to confirm? Okay. Thank you for doing that for us.
Yes, and can you project?
Yeah.
Okay, and then our information items, we have our first one is an update on the school-based health centers. And that is Carla.
Good evening, members of the board, or Chair Superintendent Hill. Um.
Come on up.
So in 2018, the Gresham Barlow School District, in consultation with the Oregon School Board Health Associate Alliance, School-Based Health Alliance, conducted a school-based health center planning process. Wallace Medical Concern, well-known as Wallace, was selected as our medical provider. In the spring of 2021, GBSD was notified that the state representative Ruiz and Senator Horsett committed 1.5 million of American Recovery Plan dollars to build a school-based health center in our district. In November of 2021, GBSD applied and received, applied for and received two grants from the Oregon Health Authority to support the planning and implementation of a school-based, school-based health center and a mobile medical unit. Time has been set aside for staff that be need to provide an update to the board along with my colleagues here. So.
Jordan, are you able to project?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time.
We have it already here.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, does it need to be for recording purposes?
Yeah, we, we want it for the people online.
For the people at home, yeah.
Well, but if she shares the screen, they'll be able to see it online. It's just we won't see it on the screen.
Yeah, so you can do the slide show, Jordan, and then I can plan if you go to that little, there you go. Okay, here we go, perfect. Okay. So, um, so the goals of this presentation are to update the board on the progress towards developing school-based health services in the district and highlight why the work is important to our students and our district. So before we go any further, there. There you go. So just, Jordan, if you go to the left corner, see that little arrow there? There, you can just kind of click to number one or two. The core planning team, so I want to introduce the core planning team. Over here, we have Jordan, who is stepping in as our board secretary tonight, but typically is the chief financial. Myself, I'm Carly Gay, Executive Director of Innovation and Partnerships. And then to my left is Lisa Klein, who's the Chief Executive Officer for Wallace. And next to Lisa is Laura Raymond, who is our consultant, who's been facilitating this whole thing and worked with Wallace on their development of a health center in Rockwood area. So, um, so. So, um, just to give you an update of where, what we've already done. So like I said in my introduction, we've received funding for school-based health services planning. We've received funding to begin to offer healthcare from a mobile medical unit, which we're hoping within the next 12 months, you can see it rolling on our streets and in our communities. And then building a school-based health center at Gresham High School. And, and we'll show you where we are currently considering having it constructed. And we've selected a medical partner organization, Wallace. And we've hired a project manager, Laura. All of this with the funds that we have from the state. And we've moved the medical, the mobile medical van that already is owned by Wallace to the facilities lot over behind Hogan Seers, right? As where, and then, um, we've hired BLRB architects who designed Gresham High School to do a site assessment, is that the right term?
Yeah, feasibility analysis.
Feasibility analysis for the school-based health center in that location. And then we have identified folks from both the architectural firm as well as district office staff. To start with the planning, these will not be our final advisory committee, but just kind of a small, and I think we have your medical officer, I can't remember his name.
Dr. Curry.
Dr. Curry, who will be joining us. So to start with some of the planning, and it's basically the planning for the planning. It's the planning of how to do our outreach and engagement and all those things. So we'll get to that in a moment. But first, why, why school-based healthcare? So we're not going to spend a ton of time on that since we already know we're moving forward with planning. But we do, we thought that this image was a really helpful image to understand how the social determinants of health, hunger, sickness, housing, all impede kids' ability to learn. And so when we take care of our kids' health, we actually afford them the ability to engage in school and thrive. And that's, that is our primary purpose. And so we liked this image. We actually got it, we got it from a national webinar, right? And then, so go ahead, Jordan. And, and really, this is a nice image too, that sort of shows where health and education intersect, which is right where school-based health services come into play. And we are, we, in this district, are viewing school-based health services as both a physical location as well as the mobile unit and the services that will be housed in both, that based out of the physical location with the ability in the mobile unit to go around. Okay, so here's when we get into some of the details, and you can click. So Gresham Barlow is the only district in all, not just in East Multnomah County, but in the whole county, that does not have a school-based health center. So we do not have school-based healthcare in our district with the exception of a few nurses who are dispersed through the MESD, but they're not there every day. Help, also, as we already noticed, healthy students are ready to learn. Also, the healthcare needs when they're met at the school, rather than kids and families, particularly some of our more vulnerable families, when they can have those needs met there, they're more likely to stay in school versus missing large chunks of the day after the doctor's office. Mental health services, et cetera, et cetera. So, and it allows our teachers to focus on teaching versus trying to take care of the other health needs that our children have. So, go ahead. So it also aligns with our mission, which is to inspire and empower each student. In our vision, culturally responsive graduates will thrive in an ever-changing community, as well as our values, stewardship, community, and integrity. And really, all of our commitment to students over our wellbeing is sort of highlighted throughout our goals, our mission, our vision, and our values. And it's aligned with our learning model. So if you look at, that's the next one. The learning model, or those are the four, what are we calling them? Pillars?
Pillars.
We like a different word, but right now, we'll use the word pillars of our learning. And, and it's so accessible and intentional instruction. In order for it to be accessible, you need to have healthy kids who can access it. Evidence-based decision-making is all about how we use data to inform how we serve kids. Teaching and learning is our culturally responsive school climate. And then our school and family partnerships, and community partnerships are really where our medical providers and our families and our students and our community-based organizations really fit very clearly in that element of our learning model and are key, one of our major cornerstones. So now I'm going to kind of stop talking, make sure that you get an opportunity to meet Wallace. So I'll just do a little introduction by saying that we initiated this conversation about school-based health center four years ago, selected Wallace as our partner. And ever since then, we've been trying to get this off the ground. And we feel like now is the moment. We've got the money, we've got the planning, we've got the, we've got this physical location, and, and we're ready, and we even have a mobile unit. So we're ready, and the state laws are aligning with us finally, because the state laws wouldn't allow us to have a mobile unit even two years ago. So now being able to do that is, it's a game changer in terms of being able to actually deliver these services. So with that, Jordan, would you go ahead, and then Lisa, you are kind of on.
Okay. Well, I will say that I'm really excited about being selected as the medical sponsor. I, before working at Wallace, I worked for Multnomah County Health Department in teen pregnancy prevention. And so I supported school-based health centers and worked closely with all of them. So I understand how they operate. I also have colleagues, most school-based health centers in the state are operated by federally qualified health centers. So my colleagues will be a resource for us as well. We have not operated one to date. But we have been a federally qualified health center since 2012. And we, and since 2013, we have partnered with the school district as well in various capacities, not at, you know, as robust as actually serving in this capacity, but in a number of ways. So, and we feel like our missions align. We have, we focus on, of course, healthcare. We also provide dental care, behavioral health. But we also have a very strong emphasis on what we refer to as social determinants of health, somehow seeing food and, and seeing people as a whole person. So we treat the whole person and the whole family. So as, and as a federally qualified health center for over a decade, I feel like that, that will be valuable experience for us moving forward. Said most of that. And we understand how important it is for, for kids to be able to get access to care in the school setting so that they don't miss school, stay engaged in school. So. In terms of health centers, so they're called federally qualified health centers, which is a lot to say. We also call ourselves community health centers. And I, I really emphasize the community because health centers really are, we want to see ourselves as an indispensable partner in the community. And health centers have been in existence since 1965. They came out of the war on poverty and the civil rights movement. And today, health centers across the country serve 28 million people, 8 million children. Here in Oregon, we have 33 health centers across the state. And at Wallace, we serve 5,000 individuals, providing about 20,000 visits a year. Most of the folks that we serve are low-income. They're either on Medicaid or uninsured, and many of them are people of color. For us, about half of our patients speak a language other than English. And you can see this graph was, was, we put that in there just to show that health centers, because one of the things I remember when we were considering becoming a health center was that this isn't like one-time funding or funding that could potentially go away. Once you're designated as a health center, you receive base grant funding, and then you're also eligible to bill Medicaid. But this graph shows the support that health centers have received since their inception. And you can see that it's just continued to grow. And, and through every administration, there has been strong support and belief that, you know, we provide care for folks who need it, and that it's a basic right. This is just a little bit more about Wallace and our funding. You can't read those same, but essentially, the gray piece and the blue piece together add up. To 88% of our revenue comes from either the base grant funding received from the federal government or the revenue that we have from patient visits. We, we are healthy, we're, we're healthy financially. We exceed industry standards on days cash on hand, liquidity, assets, and our current ratio. And that is for our, our ratio to meet our obligations. And revenue projections, our revenue projections are healthy. We were able to build, to build out the tenant improvements of the new building that we just moved into through our reserves. And we're creating an investment strategy for growth. When I started, I will just share, I started in 2008. We had seven employees, we have 82 employees now. Oh, and that's a picture of the mobile. The mobile's, you know, it's a little older. And we would look at rewrapping it, you know, putting new logo and images on it when we get it ready to roll. It was gifted to us, actually, by Multnomah County several years ago. But we've taken good care of it, and now you all are helping to take good care of it for us. We didn't have it in a location where it could be plugged in, and then you have allowed that to happen for us. And then we'll be getting it serviced and everything looked at. We've got $125,000 set aside to do that. And so that'll be happening in May, June, this year.
I just want to highlight what an asset that is for this community because of the need to make sure that, that healthcare is accessible to our more rural areas of our community that don't have public transportation, right? That don't necessarily have easy access to services. So bringing the services, you know, further east is really of value. And when we were talking with the state about mobile medical clinics, the, the unit itself runs hundreds of thousands of dollars if we were to buy it brand-new. And we wouldn't be able to afford it. And so being able to have a partner that already has one, and that really what it takes is, you know, upgrading versus brand-new purchases, that, that's pretty, it's an amazing asset. It's one of those great, it's the thing that I'm very excited about. We think we'll have students do a contest to figure out what the rationale is.
Yeah.
So, um, there's two exam rooms in it in the lab, and.
So will that be like a regular schedule that'll be, you know, East Orange, San Barlow, Hogan Seers, wherever? You know, like, what, what, how will students know, like, on?
I don't think we know that yet. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how, what our next steps are, because we're at the very early stages of planning. But I, I definitely think like one of the questions is how do we ensure accessibility and notification to students and families when it's in their community so that they can access it? But we, we don't know a lot of those details yet because that's part of our planning process.
I don't know if this is the right place to insert this, but just so like for context, we've received three different grants. One of those grants will be bringing before you at the business meeting in May.
And that's on the next slide.
Oh, it's the next slide.
Roll for it.
The other two grants are planning grants, $90,000 each, one for planning the mobile, one for planning the, the school-based health center. And so what we're doing right now is standing up the planning process. This is, we haven't started building anything yet. And that's what Laura is helping us with, is, is going through the process of figuring out exactly how we can invest with the community, with these resources.
And you can see, great segue, Jordan, that you, that the, so in the previous slide, that's what Wallace brings to the table. This is what Gresham Barlow brings to the table. We're the fiscal agents through Oregon Health Authority for both the 1.5 million for the physical building of the school-based health center and the 180,000, which are the two $90,000 grants. One is for the mobile unit, and one is for planning for the school-based health center. But we in our district see them as one, one thing, right? With a couple of different outputs. The state sees them as two kind of separate, though they're trying to work fairly related. I think we're the only district that has both grants.
Is that what's been?
One more.
Maybe one more. Yeah, maybe one other district. But most districts are not trying to both build a school-based health center and a mobile unit. But when we, we, we like to go big, so, you know, go big. And we, we wanted to take advantage of the moment. So what you can see on this slide is Gresham High School is on the right. That, that is, thank you Google Maps. And then on the left is the Malcolm property that the district owns. That's the house that we would propose to tear down and rebuild. And, and work on what happens with the trees of significance, which I can't help but say with that kind of tone, because it sounds like the Lord of the Rings.
And this is what the feasibility analysis is that we talked about earlier, is BLRB is going to help us. BLRB is who designed Gresham High School, the additions and upgrades there. And so they're both going to help us. We, we decided to contract with them early in this process. They're going to help us understand what our options are with the facility that's currently there, which we do not feel is adequate to be upgraded into a health center. And so they'll help us work with the city on the permitting process and land use and all those types of things. And then, and then we can go straight into a design process with them if we're able to get to that point where they can match the design language of the high school so that it looks like a cohesive asset.
And so on the next slide, you'll see additional resources. And we just kind of wanted to be on the capital that we, that we, you know, can bring to the table. And we have a lot, we as a district leadership team have a lot of experience in family engagement. You'll be hearing about our equity audit on Polly Jackson, has been doing a lot of that work. We also have a lot of our staff, we do family engagement. I oversee all of our counselors and social workers. We work with students and families every day and support their learning, their wellbeing, their mental health, all of those things. And then Wallace has a long history of providing care. They used to be located in the storefront over at, across from the district office where Dutch Bros is. We were working, then the kids have to go to Dutch Bros more than the healthcare center. But, but now we're at Rock, in the Rockwood site. And so really have a depth of experience of work. And so really have a depth of experience of working with a wide range of students and, and families. So we're ready to work together. So that's an asset that I just, you know, would want to underscore. And then the next slide is our project timeline. So I'll walk you through this and then we'll open it up for any additional questions you have. So you can see right now we're actually April, not March, but March through the end of June. And actually through December, we will be doing both a community engagement process and a needs assessment. So the needs assessment will be more about like looking at mapping resources and data and looking at some, some health, healthcare data. That community engagement will be really asking our students and families throughout the district, what, what services do you need? Where are we missing services? What, you know, what's our health insurance landscape look like? And then at the same time that we're doing that, it's an iterative process. We will be developing our plans. And Wallace has somebody that will be looking at our, the mobile unit and getting it ready for, to roll. And then we have BLRB. So you can see that through December, we, hopefully they will be there during the feasibility work. And ideally, we would be able to have something ready to, for construction, to break ground, you know, or tear down. And I don't know when that is, starting in January. Shortly after that, we hope to roll the mobile unit. So sometime between January and March of next year, we would have the mobile unit rolling. And so the mobile unit would be the first thing out of the gate. That aligns with our funding too, because the planning for both ends June twenty twenty-three. The mobile unit is more of a pilot from OHA's standpoint. So they really want to see it rolling by June as a proof of concept almost. And then the school-based health centers are, they've been funded for many years and they will continue to be. And so if we, if we are lucky enough to break ground in January, we would hope that the construction would take eighteen months. Fingers crossed, and that we would be able by the fall of twenty twenty-four, if not, you know, winter to open a school-based health center. So that's the timeline. Any questions?
In terms of the funding, one point five is clearly not going to cover demolition and a completely new building. So where, where's the rest of the funds coming from? I mean, at some point during the feasibility, you'll come up with a budget. And then, then you'll also come up with the rest of the funding at that point?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone too far into that yet because we don't know. I think the demolition of the current house, we've actually done a lot of the, the remediation efforts. So like asbestos abatement, there is some lead-based paint that we're going to have to deal with. So the, the facility itself has already kind of been prepared for some kind of next step, whether that was to somehow refurbish the facility or to tear it down. Our facility team is already taking care of that. And so I don't, I don't think the demolition cost would be too crazy. And we are kind of hoping that, you know, the labor and supply chain is back to some semblance of normal by the time we break ground on this project. So if I looked at it today and I said, what is it going to cost us today to build a facility like that? Yeah, I don't think we're getting there on a million five. And if inflation continues the way it's going, then we're not going to get there at a million five, but.
But all of that will come later. A few, just a couple of other quick questions.
Go ahead.
In terms of the contract with Wallace, I mean, clearly we'll have a brick and mortar. Everything's going to go perfectly smoothly.
Yeah.
Everything's going to be fine.
Jordan, you're actually going to take John's salary to something.
Whatever, whatever you need, honestly.
Thank you.
But, so clearly we'll have a brick and mortar. And we want the mobile unit to be a part of it. But I imagine in the contract, it won't be a non-negotiable, like if you don't have it or, or lose it at some point. And the only reason why I ask that is because it was donated by Multnomah County. I'm going to go out on a limb and say it's not brand new. So what's the lifespan of the mobile? And then what's the capital, you know, what are you doing to make sure that you can replace it? And I assume, and that's kind of if you can't, or if there's a timeframe between losing it and getting another one, clearly that's not going to be you have to have a mobile in order to keep the contract. I mean, right?
No, so I mean, I'll let you answer the time span issue. But what I, what I will say is that right now our agree, we have two agreements besides the contract that we're getting from the state is with Wallace to work together on the planning. And so that's, that agreement is really like, we know there's some of those details and nuts and bolts we need to figure out. And, and then we're contracting with Laura to help us kind of pull all the pieces together. That is also why if the unit, mobile unit is not available, we really want the brick and mortar so that we're not losing the services. But we also understand that the mobile unit really expands our capacity to deliver those services and is a critical element. It is also not just expensive to purchase, but expensive to literally drive and run. And so that is a, that is a conversation that we need to, and we have on our task list to be looking at grants that support that sort of thing.
So just in terms of when all of this comes back, I think would be helpful to say, yes, there is a lifespan of this and we're already acknowledging that and planning for it. And the only other two things that I'll throw out there, because this is all just, you know, preliminary right now. I can't imagine that a house has any significance. But as soon as you don't think it does, then somebody will come in and say, what? You're tearing it down? And I, I think we can, that's all manageable, like your engagement, especially when they see what they're getting for it. But we just shouldn't gloss over that and really acknowledge that someone out there might care and we're just going to be over, you know, over sharing.
Totally. And I do want to say that it is about how we go out into the community and acknowledge sort of the, the multiple attachments to the house and the physical space, but to having a voice in what the new design looks like and ensuring that the flow is, the flow of traffic is something that is welcoming for students and families. Like so it's everything from the, the demolition of that particular house, making sure we have the permits and the permission to do so. But then also, how do you do that sensitively? And, and then engage people in a process to ensure that they're bought into the new space.
The one, the last one, and this is all early too, is the whole difference, or I mean, obviously you guys keep statistics now about how many kids are missing and what the reasons are. But as we implement the clinic, what, how is that changing all of our numbers? I'm sure you'll do it, but I just say that's it.
I think it's good to say that because I do think it is sometimes easy to jump forward and, and not have a baseline of how does this make a difference for students. One thing I do also want to say about that, the facility itself, and Jordan and I have talked about it. I don't know if you want, so this is the asset piece of it.
Sure, I can.
Okay.
I can speak to it.
Go ahead.
So we'll be building the facility and the facility will be owned by the school district. And that's regardless of what happens with the medical side of it. And so one of, one of the things that Carla and I have talked a lot about is that this is a facility, we all know the district is never short on, or is never, never has a surplus of space, right? And so this is a facility that if, if the medical center thing doesn't work out, maybe as a society, we find a different way to help kids with medicine than the school. We still have an asset for the, the school district for the myriad uses that we have.
Yeah. And I think exactly. And I mean, it's, so the hope would be we have our anchor partner providing health services there. And it's for, for lots that is not giving us as a district much of a financial asset at all right now. It's an empty lot that where it, that's an eyesore, quite frankly. And so having it be a usable space in terms of a facility for the district to own is a, is a good investment in the district and from, on the district side of things. And then I'm going to go with that our medical services are a huge success. And they're such a success that there's a private fundraiser out there who donates money. And we have an expansion to have not only a healthcare center, but we also have a clothing closet and a food pantry and a, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I, those are, or whatever, right? Or James's new superintendent's office or whatever. Anyway, my point is, is that I think it will be a, a financial, a positive financial asset for the district as well.
I just want to say I'm super excited about this because my first year of teaching, I got to see this in action. I tied a two-room schoolhouse in southeastern Oregon. Kids were bused in from an hour away from different ranches. And, you know, I had, the school district didn't provide me health insurance. The nearest doctor was two hours away. I got paid half of what they do in town, but it was a job, right? Don't know why my future wife didn't want to live there. That's why I'm here today. But once a month, they would have a mobile clinic for the community, come all the way from Burns down to Fields, Oregon. And so that's where I got my medical care. That's where all the ranchers got their medical care. It was a literal lifeline. So from the personal experience I have, I'm super excited that we could have this on the community.
So I have a couple of questions, comments, whatever. As it, as it goes through the planning part, and maybe this is already known and I just don't know that much about it, but we reference it as a school base, but are the hours outside of school hours, is it open weekends, evenings, things like that? Is it available for students who maybe aren't coming from school, but would still come because it feels approachable? So is that something that's just sort of a given, that it's got hours that are conducive to people being able to get there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be part of the planning process. We think students can actually access it. And then it has to align with the staffing model.
Right, yeah, right, right.
And the community, I will just say that that, I mean, the community engagement from the, they have a pretty solidly laid out questions. And already I've been like collecting my own and then trying to crosswalk them. But it is sort of like, what are the, you know, what is the access? What does the physical layout look like? What are the hours of service that where kids, where we know kids will access it more frequently, right? Like what, what, what does, what does it look like to ensure that families can get their kids there if they're in elementary school and need vaccinations or whatever? Like, so I think, I think those are the kinds of things that will come out in the community engagement and planning process.
Okay. I did notice there's a sign up that's on the gate, you know, that says this property is going to have something done on it. I don't know where the comments are directed when people, does that come to your office then? If somebody has a question, is there a problem?
No, no, that'd be too early.
Well, it's a, it's a pink sign. I'm not sure who put it up, if it's city or.
One of, one of the issues we've had there is we've had people come camp inside the building, you know, and so it could be a sign about trespassing.
I'll have to read, I'll look and see. And then a couple more things. I'm going to say four, because then if I stop at three. So we did look when we originally got this, that the house is not on a historic registry. It is not a historic house. It has significance. That's a little bit different because there are some people that are saying, well, it's on the historic registry. No, it's not. It was bought, just, I got to put in a little bit of my, I remember when we did this. It was bought with federal money that the school district got during one of the, was it the R money?
R money, yeah.
And so we, you know, we were able to use the money for that. It's been just kind of waiting for us to be ready to do something with it. And then the final part, I don't think we can say it enough, but, you know, appreciation to Representative Ruiz and Senator Borcha for being able to front load this and provide this money for the district. I'm excited about it. I do know my big one is dental care. You know, there's not enough places where kids can get dental care. You can't do home care for dental care. So I'm excited about that component of it. So yeah, just, you know, keep us, keep us in the loop and, and I'll go see what that sign is on. I drive by it every day, I don't know what it says.
I think it says.
This property is under review.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. So we're launching the mobile services in January. Is there a reason why we can't do it in September? Maybe it was full year, sorry.
Good question. We have, so part of the mobile grant is that we do planning and community engagement. And we need to, our kids aren't in school over the summer, so we need to do that planning when kids are available. That's number one. And then the unit itself, go ahead.
Right, so we'll be having it serviced this summer. But then once we decide, once we've done the planning, decide the hours of operation, we have to hire a provider, we get our team together and.
Yeah, it's, it's more likely, the state actually wanted us to be able to roll by January and then they backed out of that just realistically between the planning and the hiring of people. And part of the planning is making sure it is financially, you know, not just that the unit itself is ready to go, but that we can pay for the gas and then we have somebody who can drive that. It's huge, like that thing, you know, like. And so I mean, it's, it's all of those pieces and then staffing it and putting together a schedule that works and all of that, so.
Where is the mobile unit?
It's parked at the facility's.
Oh, okay.
Facility.
So I, I have, so I have one more.
Go ahead.
I realized on your project timeline chart, what are the colors? What does this mean? There's no key, no legend, they don't match up. What is, what is this actually showing? Why is it orange and blue?
There's actually no significance. It was just to see it.
Okay.
It's just a visual, visually.
Okay, so it made those words a visual, because I kept trying to connect up the blues and the blues have aligned with each other and a goldstone. So as we're working for, yeah, I saw the bottom, you know, the dates, but the stuff on the side didn't match. So for a community outreach, being able to see steps will help. Because I kept trying to find a rhyme with reason and there wasn't.
Somebody who's got some graphic skills, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to thank Carla for her leadership and Jordan and the team. But I, I'm excited about the fact that, you know, normally you would kind of take on either school-based health center or maybe the mobile. But we're doing both because this is a significant need in Gresham Barlow's school district that the mobile unit will certainly get into more rural areas. But we have to significantly need Gresham High School as well. And so, you know, that's why it seems like a, you know, overwhelming undertaking. But actually, if things work out the way we're hoping, you know, we're going to be able to provide some services to our students and families through years to come. So it is kind of exciting for us to be, you know, be in a position where the generous donations from our representatives and our courses are getting with the planning grants and with partnerships, you know, we do have the ability to really affect positively some of the support of services in our community. So I mean, that's what I'm really looking for.
I don't want to follow up Jake because he's so positive. I, when, the comment about, you know, providing those wraparound services and having a positive, having a good thing. I'm wondering if there's going to be a requirement of serving a certain number of kids who are insured versus kids who are not insured to maintain them. So there's no, no requirements.
No, we actually are required to see all colors.
Okay. So I am excited for that.
That regardless of insurance, yeah.
I'm sure you've already talked to some of our community-based partners already.
Not yet. That's part of, so part of it is that, like, we got the grant and then we've been spending some time just trying to launch it. And the state is just launching it with us in the last couple of weeks. So we are now, our next step was to share this with you all and then really pull together, we're meeting with the BLRB folks and our smaller district planning committee on Monday. And so at that point, we will put together more of a like, okay, you know, what's our planning team, what's our outreach strategy? I do want to say that part of this is being super conscious and about the state requirements out of Oregon Department of Education for integrated guidance that also require, did almost exactly the same timeline, which is a whole series of community engagement to build towards an application process in the spring for our renewal of our SIA funds and emergency funds and all of that. So there's some intentional planning that has to happen so we're not tapping out our community partners and going to them for health services over here and then for education services over here. When actually, when you go back to that intersection graphic, there are many questions that could cover both. And we want to be thoughtful about how we do that. So that's the stage that we're in is like planning for that and being thoughtful about it. So that's the stage that we're in is like, planning for that and being thoughtful about it.
Yeah, and as we get closer to being, being able to provide all of those wraparound services, making sure that there's a good referral process so that communities are using, so like duplicating services and we get to sort of.
Yeah. Our son partners in particular, and we have many culturally specific partners doing re-engagement for us and with us right now, and they will be kind of our first, and they all represent multiple cultural and linguistically different. And, and drug and alcohol services, like we have a whole host of other partners that will be a part of this process.
Thank you. Any other comments for Carla or?
I just want to say that we're really lucky to have, I mean, I was a part of standing up a similar thing at Benson High School and that was with OHSU and OHSU is huge. And the, it was just so cumbersome. So to have this chief, the executive director here with us and working side by side on the details and the conversation means that we can actually move this work so much faster. The fact that we already have the mobile unit on our parking space, that Jordan was able to get Terry, like, I mean, we can do work at a much faster pace and with, with Wallace, literally by her side.
So John or Jordan are going to get trained to drive it?
Oh, I'm not.
Sean wants to drive it too.
Yeah, Sean. I'm more than John for this whole.
Have you got a bus driving license?
I drove a school bus for six months.
Okay.
It will be ready for the tour. So let's take a two, five minute break, five minutes recess.
Jordan, I think we can put on pause. Okay, take a five minute break.
Right around mainstream.
Our last information agenda item is building safety and security update from John.
Thank you, Chair. We're, Mike and I are here tonight. Mike Melton, our safety coordinator for the district. So for those who don't know him, here's your introduction to Mike. He's co-presenting with me this evening. Uh, or I'm co-presenting with him. I'm not sure how that works. Uh, we are about to share some good news for you. It's related to the bond or with you. It's related to the bond. If you will remember, I'll give you the history, although I wasn't part of this process. Prior to asking for the bond in 2016, we did a pretty comprehensive security analysis of the district using New Dawn Securities. You'll see their name in here soon. They, like I said, comprehensive, they went through, gave all the schools a rating of what they saw. And the bond work related to safety was designed around that audit. So that was what was presented to the community. You're going to also see a scale tonight of zero to 100. 100 is, although you would think you want to get to 100, you don't. 100 is prison-like, concertina wire, fences, that kind of thing. You don't ever want schools to get to that level, but you do want them to get to a level where you're not obviously pushing people out, but at the same time securing the people who are inside. So you'll see some ratings along that tonight. Mike, did I explain that well enough?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's like the ideal score? So 100 is not it. Is, is it like 80? Is it 70? What's the goal?
The goal's improvement. I mean, from where we were to where, where we are now, and you'll see in the next slide, we improved by 37 point, whatever this score was. So it was a huge upgrade. You know, it could be pretty subjective from where we're at to 100, right? And within, if you, I think they have a copy of the report. In that report, he recommends, there's still some recommendations that could happen, but a lot of that is centered around more staffing, right? Maybe some, you know, set ted things that we could possibly do, but it, it all, of course, improves, you know, needs dollars. And to further that question, Sean, there's also a piece of how old is the facility and how it was designed originally. So there isn't a perfect score. Some of our buildings that were designed in the seventies are harder to improve because of that open building concept. So improvement, like Mike said, is really what we're going for. And you'll see some substantive improvement here. On this slide, you'll see three graphs. Uh, you'll look at the high school, middle school and elementary ratings from 2018, 19 and then 22, which is just the January rating that just came here. So you'll see where the, where the average scores have gone up over time. The other total GBSD average scores by level is there as well. Substantive improvement, like you would say. The bottom graph is a little different than the upper graph. That's a percentage of standards, individual standards that have been met throughout the district since the bond. And you'll see, I'll go over those here in a minute. So in 2018, 51% of those standards were met and we are now at 88, which is substantive improvement. These are the evaluation factors with a quick summary of each and what they look for to evaluate those. You will see these in detail in the report that you guys have, so feel free to take a look at that. They do go into each school, each factor, what the ratings were for each one. Uh, but those are the big things. And one of, as I told principals today, and I haven't shared this with the secondary principals yet, one of the biggest holes in security is and always will be humans. Do they make the right choice? What are they facing at that moment? Did they have the training? And again, you get back to that score. You're never going to be perfect. You're always going to have personnel turnover. You're always going to have training issues. You're always going to have to go back to the basics with those who are new. So you're in a never-evolving cycle. These ratings could change year to year, even month to month, depending on who's there.
When do you want questions? At the end of this or kind of just we know you want to wait till the end?
We can take them now.
Okay, because I did read the report. Um, it was, I really appreciated having that and also the shorter part. And I agree with you that the human component of it, um, training as well and visitors access to the building. No, we're gonna have to go on.
We'll go back to it. We'll come back. Uh, there was also a question about Mike's roles and responsibility. Mike, I'll let you take the lead on that one.
So as we read through this and then I can, I can expand and take questions. I'm, I'm better at just taking questions because I don't know what you really want to know or don't know. And I want to be respectful of everybody's time. So the biggest thing that started off this year was training implement the security trio, which is the new, new cameras, district-wide access control, district-wide intrusion, standing it up and getting the integration going on all three pieces. I did bring my laptop to see if we could demonstrate some of that stuff, but I'm a little worried that we would have connection issues. So at any point in time, I'd be glad to show that and work process for you. The cameras and the access control work together. So if somebody comes through the door out there, it would pop on a map or it'd pop a camera up, however you want to put that together. So there's a lot to be layered there to show. Implement standard response protocols. That is basically the lockdown, lockout, secure shelter in place, that kind of stuff. We've been out for two years. It's been, um, we've asked schools to practice that and they are, but it's also being respectful of trying to get kids back into learning environment first and foremost. So, you know, we really haven't been heavy-handed about that, but we will. And then there's a piece coming that we're going to add to that standard response protocol that we're going to start implementing over the summer. And it has to do with run height fight that we're going to add to it. Run height fight. So, um, without giving too much detail, because this is something that we're going to be talking about through the summer. It's, aggression police would rather prefer to call it avoid, deny, defend, but it's all being the same. And so we're going to add the avoid to it when we get to that, that piece over the summer. And that's basically just an options base, right? If we were sitting in this room and we heard something really bad happening there, we have the opportunity to get out, we should get out. And that's, that's kind of where we're going to go. Safe routes to schools is a partnership with Mobile County. It's through a grant program that the county has. And basically it's about education of kids walking to school, riding their bikes to school, creating walking buses, as they call them, in the neighborhoods. And that partnership had started back in 2019, just sort of getting off the ground and of course the pandemic hit, we shut down. Now we're trying to kind of reinvigorate that a little bit. And there's a couple of elementary schools that are really taking that to heart. I think Logan Cedars and East Gresham comes to mind right off the top of my head. Traffic assessment at schools. I am not a traffic engineer and that hit me right in the face to start with. It's been really bad. Just paint not a rose picture about it. Most of it is because it's pandemic related. Parents aren't easy about putting their child on a bus, so they're driving to school. And that causes a huge headache because as John said, some of our buildings were not designed to handle that amount of traffic. And so it's, that's been a struggle.
Even the new buildings?
Even the new buildings. That's been a struggle. It has eased a little bit since spring break because I think parents have started to realize it's okay. I can put them on a bus. It'll be fine. So it has eased. So we hope that continues. Liaison with police. I have over, I've been with the district for 27 years. So in my 27 years here, I've built a pretty good relationship with the police department. And that is a continuation that I continue every day to do. Most of the people that I've come up with have since retired over there, but there's still quite a few there that I know. Safety, security, training lead, that is, all that is, is, you know, I go to the schools and we'll talk to the schools about, you know, different ideas that they need to think about, do. Some of that is, you know, we're trying to get principals to think of four different directions that if they had to get out of the building to go, they got to think about four different directions because at any point in time, two of those could be cut off from them. So those are conversations that we're having just about every day. And day-to-day operations and responses, just, you know, something pops up at a school that a principal needs, I will go. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, you know, my background is 27 years in the district. Actually, it's been my whole life. I went to first grade at East Gresham and came all the way through. And my kids went to, went through Gresham High School. So I'm born and bred in this place.
So I remembered what some of my questions were. So, because the key areas I looked at, visitor access, portables, the difference between Gresham and San Barlow, and then some others. But the visitors, is this looking at just who came in and how they came in? Or is there even a component that says, are you even allowed to be here?
We do not have that component yet, the latter. We don't have that component yet. It's something that we have talked about, but there's a cost. It's a yearly cost because it's part of a database that you would have to buy into as a license and then continue that.
So it's possible if we decided we wanted to do that, but right now that's not, it's, it's reminded more on the human factor.
Correct.
At the school.
Yes. Right now we keep a volunteer database. They go through their background checks. So the volunteers go through this and then building office staffs have access to that in real time?
It's the people who don't do a volunteer form who are not supposed to be in the building because there are child guardianship errors or arrangements that they are not supposed to be with their child. We don't have a way to keep them out unless somebody happens to see them and go, you're not supposed to be here.
One of the operational things that they, that we do do is because we built the vest to be opened in and people have to ring the A phone to get in, right? Ostensibly, the front office personnel can look up that person to see if they have parental rights or not and then they can keep them out of the building.
Because they, and Mike's referring to the double vest you build and we all have them too. So they can't necessarily get in. They can get into that first door, but the office staff would have to let them through the second door as well. So they're grieving.
Okay. Um, do you have, okay, I'll go, I'll do one more and I'll hop over you. I noticed on the comparison between Gresham High School and San Barlow, Gresham has specifically called out additional people for security. Not necessarily SRO, but campus security. It didn't call out any specific number for, for San Barlow. So I didn't know how many Gresham had currently, but it called out for six more.
So Sean, who runs New Dawn Security, I think he and I talked about that. And most of that is born out of the amount of doors and access to Gresham High School.
Because we got rid of a bunch or there's still a lot of doors?
There's, there's still a lot of doors, but all the doors now have card access to them, right? So they're just not, they're just not there to be propped, I guess, lack of a better word. And part of that is in the integration. So a door is, does get popped, it pops up in the security office as it's propped, and they can go close it right away.
Okay, okay, okay. I'll let you go and I'll get that.
Um, well, one of the things that I was looking at that you kind of spread up was somebody coming into the building that isn't supposed to be there. Whether that be, you know, a custody thing or, or just a person walking in that's not supposed to be there. Um, because the doors can all have locks and festivals and all those things. But every morning, we open the doors and anybody walks in. I could walk into Barlow High School every morning with my children and nobody's stopping me because all the doors are unlocked. So, um, I guess my question is, how are we identifying people? Um, are, are, you know, how are we identifying that they're a staff, a student, somebody who's supposed to be there as opposed to not? And then, um, I guess that's the first question.
So the answer is a little bit, is, is kind of layered. The, the two high schools really, are really the two big ones, and really the only ones that are having doors opened in the morning on a schedule. So the schedule on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday is from seven to about seven forty, and then they lock. So part of what Chris was talking about is having people at the doors as kind of greeter. That is a staffing issue at each, at each school. And for the most part, they are covering those doors when they're open. Elementary schools and middle schools have, for the most part, decided they want their doors closed all the time. So the only way kids are getting in at those schools are staff is there, open the door, and they're letting them in.
Well, and it's generally drop offline, one child at a time, or they're hanging off on the school bus. So it's really one entrance being used or two entrances.
And, and, and that's the thing about the two high schools. Those doors, we've pared it down to only three open in the morning, not, you know, all however many there are.
All the way around the third side.
Correct, there's only three that are open.
So how we have issues with people trying to get in that are not supposed to be there?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No.
So a few times that I dropped off is, I always see at least three people at the, at the three steps.
Yeah. The, and I haven't observed for a while, but that was my observation in the fall. The, and the other, not, acceptable is not the right word. The other consequence of humans occupying a facility is you will always have holes. One of those isn't acceptable. You, kids need free access in and out of their school at those times. Uh, and you don't want to present that unnecessary barrier that makes them feel unwelcome. At the same time, you want to be able to observe. So that's one of those areas you picked up on. That's the one that I preach to principals on a regular basis. This is your most insecure time of the day. You have to be watching.
Well, I mean, for the high school level, yes, I agree, those hours are about timeframe, not even an hour, I don't think, is the most dangerous. But if you want to gain access to a high school building, people are going in and out all the time because you can, high schoolers are leaving at all times, which means they're coming out a door. So if you stand by a door, you could just, because even through the vestibule, when I buzz in, they buzz me in and I open the door. Well, unless I'm shutting it behind me and not letting the other two people waiting come in, which feels really rude, they're also walking in at the same time as I am. So if somebody sees that happen.
It's a training issue and always will be.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, are we able to identify those people if, if they are coming in with ill intent? Could we later identify? And I'll, and I'll say that, I'll frame it because I had an experience at a neighboring district when I was there for basketball game, where somebody walked in and I was just watching the basketball game, completely covered. Hoodie, mask, sunglasses, sweatpants. I, I had no reason to fear them. I was there watching the basketball game. I, but the thought crossed my mind, if they had ill intent, I have zero identifying characteristics. I don't know their gender, I don't know their race, I don't know their hair color, I don't know their eye color. I, I mean, I, I literally could tell you that they were wearing a black hoodie. Everybody in the world has a black hoodie. Um, so I just, I, that, then I started realizing we have that same situation potentially at our schools. Um, is there policy that affects that that we should be reviewing? Do we have an issue? And so that is one of my questions. Do we have an issue where people are trying to get in? Or do we have an issue identifying people if they are getting in?
Policy aside, back to what you said in the beginning, if somebody did have ill intent and wanted to come in covered up like that, they would.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's not a policy issue, it's not a clothing issue, it's just a, does a person have ill intent issue? So could we identify our cameras are state-of-the-art? We can identify a lot of things right now. Uh, would you have human witnesses? Absolutely you would. You'd have kids, you'd have other things, you'd have people in the hall. So I do believe we can, with confidence, we could say we'd have enough to get a good attempt to identify. But if somebody wants to conceal who they are, they will. And not, no policy is going to change necessarily.
And that's like after-school activities, like it was a basketball team, right? I, because during the day, I, I have an experience that like every time I have to buzz in, and then once I get in, I have to sign in, even if there are people behind me, they have to sign in. But the after-school stuff, what I think to realize is like.
Yeah, it's more relaxed.
Yeah, it is somewhat relaxed.
It is.
Yeah, I, I just wonder, there are students who are intentionally hiding their faces for various reasons, I'm sure. Um, and not that all of those are for reasons, but it becomes an identification issue um, and, and then a safety issue in my mind. So I just have some concerns about that.
Do you have any more?
Um, not yet.
Okay, all right, I'll ask. I'm, I'm just going to keep, um, so it mentioned in here quite a bit, again, the human factor of training, 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 training. And is that something that's going to be on a schedule for employees? Just to make sure it's just part of your regular, here's what I need to train new employee. I remember in the day, the code words, you know, I don't know if we still use code words. That, that didn't work. Nobody can remember the code word, which building you were at. You know, it was a different word in a different building. Um, so that was just, you know, a question that I had about, you know, how they're going to do that. I'm still concerned about volunteers and weekends, you know, that they're in the building. We don't have a good way of tracking if they fill out that form. That's, that's still, to me, that's a, a personal, well, that's a hard. Map updates for first responders, since we remodeled all these buildings, everybody got that. It wasn't really addressed in the safety thing, but that would be more a procedural, but I'm assuming that.
You are, yeah, we have.
And we don't post maps on any of our websites anymore, right? Okay, perfect. Um, it also mentioned that others besides the front office should be able to call the lockdown. Have we taken phones out of the classrooms? Do they have intercoms? I mean, in, in a short, without detail, but can they do that? Can, do they have the physical capability?
It is, it is possible. These are things that we are talking about right now. How far do we want to go with it? Um, the system affords us that opportunity to do that.
Okay. Um, and I think my last one, that works there, on portables. Jordan, I know three places where we still have portables, and I'm still super concerned about the absolute lack of security with the portables. Um, they're not safe, they've never been safe, they never will be safe. And they may not have kids in them, some do, some are staff. They're not safe buildings. And so the further down the line we can go and get rid of those, the happier I'll be. But I've been singing that song for twenty-two years. I'm getting a little out of tune. So there's, there's my, my soapbox for a minute. And when I saw in the report about the portables, it just emphasized, we got rid of them for most of the kids um, with the bond, but we do still have a site that has kids in portables. And, and then we have staff that are in portables. So they're just not meant to be secure spaces for a variety of reasons. Variety of security as well. So I'll go back to you.
Um, I think you covered one of them. When I looked through the very long forty-five page thing. Very enlightening. Somewhere I wrote here, I don't know, one piece of paper. The, the one thing that we scored the lowest on was human response, which, like you said, partially is expected because humans are humans naturally. Um, but some of the things we scored low on were protocols, procedures, support and training. So just a comment that.
Yep.
That's important, obviously, and that's something that we can improve. And it doesn't cost a lot. Obviously, we can't spend a whole bond amount.
I anticipated that whole Mike and I had to conversation today. And Mike and I check in on a daily basis of where are we, what's our status every morning. The pandemic side and construction side, or not construction side, pandemic and construction prior to, drills weren't happening in all places. People weren't practicing, that hole is legitimate. So what I've started every month is my monthly review of drills. Mike, I'm, Mike is going out and watching drills. Our S R Os are going out and watching drills. We're getting that information. I'm sending summaries to principals at the end of every month. Your drill happened or didn't happen, where are you on this? So we are getting back to that training piece, uh, because it is a hole.
Do we have a standard for how often those drills have to happen?
Yes, they're, fire drills are required by statute, which is antiquated. Um, last school fire that killed anybody was in the nineteen thirties. Uh, what we are transitioning to is our lockouts. Um, secures, other drills are incorporated into those at periodic times during the year. Fire drills happen every month, so drills do happen every month. But we schedule out a variety. Some of our high schools are doing their lockdowns this week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for this semester, so it is happening, yes.
Um, I wanted, because I was asking a lot of questions, it sounded like I was critical of this. I appreciated the detail that went into it. I appreciated the, the information that was in it. And I also expect that we will continue to improve as we go. I mean, this is, this is good that we're doing this, so I do definitely appreciate that. And, um, I've read and done, and, and, you know, I've gone to N S B A and done some things. And, um, what you were saying, Holly, ill intent won't follow the rules. They won't push the buzzer, they won't wait for the vestibule, they won't walk. They're going to come in to do harm to someone or the students or, or something. And, um, so that's, you know, it's how we mitigate that and how we do follow-up with it. But, um, you know, we can't rely on buzzer on the front door. And we definitely cannot put us into a prison. I don't want to get to a hundred percent if that's the prison. We built playgrounds, people should be able to use them. We have a building, we want people to safely enter the building. Um, but we don't want to be so afraid that kids are not getting their education, that they're not able to do that. So, um, so, yeah.
And this is that surface piece. So you guys have another benefit that I didn't anticipate we would use as quickly as we did. Um, when we had the protest at Barlow, we were able to practice our response in detail. Um, and it worked perfectly because we were aware, safety-wise, about that. We were getting information about different groups, it was disturbing. Um, that day, as we realized what was evolving, um, we were able to set up a command center in the district office, and they had real-time access to all the cameras. We've never had that before. So then we were able to go to the site, manage the site, give directions, tell people what we wanted them to do, give the intelligence that we have, share that and come up with a plan in real time. Uh, we were able to station people, react, and we had the perimeter of that building as secure as we could quickly. I was getting real-time information from Tracy and James through the cameras about what we needed to react to because we couldn't be inside looking at the cameras. The system worked really, really well. Uh, so even when there is an emergency, I have more confidence I ever have, uh, that we're going to be able to manage it. So that's a, a benefit that I didn't anticipate from the bond that is real and hard to quantify.
So kind of what you just said, then, John, is some of that, is it a general that someone's kind of aware of social media when stuff starts happening? Is there someone who, because you can't spend your whole life on that because you just be, you'd be chasing things. But how?
We'll share information when there's, Athena knows some things as well, or monitoring that happens. We do a lot more behind the scenes than you would think.
Uh-huh, okay. I wasn't sure if you're going to wear the, the.
Longboarders.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that's all.
A lot of time staff, a lot of time families.
And the way we manage emergencies, I don't want to give too much away to the, how we manage emergencies in real time, so every site knows what they need to know. Every building happens instantaneously now. Um, we've done a lot behind the scenes in the past five or six years to make sure that people are informed and know how to respond. We just had our last, uh, second reunification practice because Grace Community Church is a partner.
Uh-huh.
Um, so we have that place laid out, and we're confident that we could get it set up in about forty-five minutes to an hour to reunify.
Because that's, that was one of the other big parts, was when something happened.
So we have two sites, East Hill, Grace, we're working on Good Shepherd, uh, just because of proximity. Uh, we've practiced that staff know how to come into the situation, so we've gone through all of those things. That's all the behind the scenes work that you never want to use.
Right.
But a lot has gone into that.
But it keeps things getting worse.
And we learned a ton from Park Rose, and we learned a ton from Reynolds on how to do a reunification site. So we are much more prepared.
And through Mike's leadership, you know, working with our law enforcement partners, I mean, there is active knowledge involved in your facilities.
Yes.
And I just leave it at that, which is, you know, a positive thing. And then the plan is to see from the fact that we, we do have some of our buildings and our portables that are getting to that in the life scenario, that, you know, there are some conversations that we're going to need to have uh, with the district leadership team and, and born around some opportunities to take a look at assets that we have and how we need to pivot, making sure that, you know, we are making the right decisions around longevity of, of current facilities and potential opportunities for sites and district needs. And so, you know, I've been just planning to see that Jordan, who's already, who's been kind of doing some legwork and I've asked him to kind of take a look at some, some information that we're hoping that we're going to be able to share at some point with you and support. But those are concerns that we also have as far as, you know, while we can't get to always a hundred, you know, we're certainly a lot better than we, we were. And then, you know, with Mike and with, you know, John and Jordan and others, you know, I feel like, you know, we're going to have to kind of determine costs versus what we can. And again, when, when people, you know, want to do bad things, they will do it. Doesn't really matter if you have the vestibules and you have some other things. But I'm a lot more confident in what facilities are going to be to, to serve some of these things because of the law versus the prior to the law itself, you know?
So as these changes take, take place and they log in our schools, I, I'd like to hear how our parents are feeling and how our students are feeling. Um, one of the recommendations is fences. So as, you know, how far are we from adding the fences? And there must be a difference, so how far is it from adding our block? And then what is the difference between a prison, a detention center, and a school? So I'd like to hear from our parents, how are they feeling with these new changes? Do they feel just as welcome? Do they really do feel safe, that their kids are safer or not? And how are the kids feeling? Um, I know, like, when I found to drop off, they said, eh, the kids are ready. Is that happening at all in our schools? So our kids feel like they are being, they are being welcomed, or do they feel like they're being watched? So I'd like to hear their feeling about these changes.
No, it was really good to see the report and the improvements that are done. I think there was money well spent with bond, and it shows in that report, so that was.
And like you said, recognizing some of the old buildings, they weren't designed to be enclosed.
Right, right, right.
Just anecdotally, I can say, um, being a former principal at Barlow in the early two thousands, there were quite a few entrances and exits that were easily accessible during the school day, which that are not available today.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cook can say the same thing.
Seventy-two doors at Gresham High School. It was seventy-two.
There's seventy-two now?
Yeah. People spread different information, but I counted them. For I had that. Yeah, it was some, my room numbers.
Oh, the kids were telling me.
Yeah.
The kids were telling me, sorry.
It was a sieve, a sieve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Chair, I might recommend that, um, we.
Yes.
Take, uh, go into the executive session. It's going to take us a little bit of time to pause, um, or zoom in and then get into the executive session. We have only a few minutes to transition.
I know.
Yep. Yeah, let's do seven. And you do three nine minutes?
We don't.
Okay.
We, oh, five.
Okay, seven thirty-seven.
I didn't.
When?
When executive session is done, are you going to want?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the Gresham Barlow School Board of Directors will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing the following. Review and evaluate a homework officer superintendent, O R S one nine two point six six zero two I.
Print two, print I.
Executive sessions are close to the public. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision made in the executive session. We are not gonna go into a five-minute basis. So we have a couple of discussion items. Okay, we are going back into, following executive session, the board is reconvening into regular board work session. Kathy Keeley, I had to re-early, she left around eight fifteen. Now we are going back into our regular work session, we have a couple more discussion items, we are gonna start with the National School Board Association Conference brief, so at this, uh, the National School Board Association conference that was held on twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two, San Diego, myself, Vice Chair Chris Howitt, and Director Sean Fares, along with Superintendent James and Board Secretary Sarah Avery, attended together. So we have set time aside this, at this evening's board meeting to hear a brief report from each member regarding the conference. So I'll model how brief we're gonna be. One of the session, uh, there were several sessions offered. The session that comes to mind is, uh, what about building community and cultural monsters as new board members come in? How do we work together and how do we agree to disagree? That one was fun and very informative, in that they talked about the different generational work styles, as well as the levels of experience, so that's something that it would do higher again with the consults I came last time, they can, I can share more with them so that we can continue working on that and also collaborating with our leadership. And besides that, it was nice to hang out with.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's always the part that's nice, the, the, uh, team building part of it. I went to a number of sessions, and I was just trying to look up on my, my app to see that all of the ones I did, I didn't feel like there were any that were not applicable to something. Two that I especially enjoyed, I like the keynote speaker that started, the student presentation stuff is always made, and you know, the student activity thing. I went to one that was from our very own, in our backyard, the target falcon school district, about their student engagement. And they gave sort of the overarching arc of how they had started with thinking they could have a student that was there at the meetings. And it didn't always work as well as they had hoped, so they've gone back and they, they've worked it, changed it a little bit, done some other engagement with students that is not necessarily one person who comes to the meeting. And so that, I've got a whole bunch of information from them, and also a contact person to talk to them about how they did their more engaged student voice component. And, because there's several different models around, and that one was a little bit of a hybrid of how they did it. And then the other one I went to was a, a mindful, um, take care of yourself kind of session, just sort of that, um, slow down, take a deep breath, we're all doing as best we can, and, and remember to do a little bit of self-care. And so that was, that was also very nice, but attendance was down for the conference by quite a bit, but the people that came seemed to be there to learn something. We had one session that was literally filled to capacity, that I haven't seen that in a long time. And that one was about how to keep engagement on a positive level with your community, with your constituents, with other folks that you come into contact with on the board. And, and that one was also a very interesting one as well, so I'll get more notes about some of that, but that was what, what we did, and San Diego was very nice for walking around.
It wasn't warm.
It was warmer than that snow.
That is true.
Yeah, yeah.
That is true, son.
Went to several great sessions, I went to a lot focused on equity, went to some that were focused on like the school board, um, but the, the one of the most out of the box thinking sessions I went to was a school districts and like thirty thousand kids, so obviously double our size, so they have more resources and everything. But they brought hands-on learning to their schools K to twelve that worked in partnership with several universities around the world to do studies like even gene, you know, breaking apart genes and studying the genes, and you know, we're talking like second graders that are doing work for these colleges and universities, and so it's like, got me thinking, how, I mean, obviously you can't go there right now, but what can we do maybe with, can we call it a partner, you know, or Portland State, or, you know, some other universities that are local, you know, and start working that K to twelve, how, you know, and reaching out to them and saying, how can we help you? So our students, A, get an experience that is hands-on, but B, you know, less than know, hey, I could do this as a profession, I, I mean, this is interesting, but in colleges, maybe not as intimidating as it could have been, so. It's also important to note that the school population was, is a majority minority population. So it was really interesting.
One other one that, that I went, I was just looking up to see, I went to one that was about a podcast that a superintendent does in Jordan, Utah. They have a pretty good sized school district, when you set the size up, so it reminded me, they have something like fifty-eight thousand kids, lots of schools, and he was trying to figure out how to engage better in snippets. So he started doing podcasts, and went from, you know, a few people checking in, he said mostly thought it was his own kids and wife, but to thousands of people, and it was a way to get out quick information, it was a way to give out stories about what was going on in the district, and to just keep people engaged, and they put one out every Tuesday, and said, people wait for that, and they run into them in the, the stores, and they can tell by his voice, they'll say, I do that superintendent guy, so that was very engaging, and I thought, we could do something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so it's, it's called Jordan Supercast, Superintendent Cast, Podcast, Supercast. So go take a listen, see what you like, you know, and see, but I think it's something that anyone would be able to word out is, is a good way.
I, I had the chance to stay a little bit of a lot of different sessions, particularly around school board and superintendent relationships, I said, it's something that I'm interested in, a lot of equity. But I wanted to, you know, share that, boy, we have some very talented students from all over the country performing, right? We had some fabulous student performances, but really one of my favorite sessions was the keynote speaker.
Yes.
David and John, who was the people's shark, Shark King, and I just was so compelled with his story and how he made money and how he was hustling, and just, you know, with FUBU and the whole bit. And I, we were so engaged, that session went fifteen minutes over, and I think we're late for the next session, because we had the hustle, but, but I just thought, you know, as far as presentations, and I've heard a lot of, you know, keynotes in my time, that was one of the better ones, I think, in my, my opinion, and you know, I mean, there were like five thousand of our closest friends in the same place, and I didn't know that, you know, Chris had to say to us that, that's actually, you know, I thought there were a lot of people, she's like, oh, we're kind of down. I'm like, how much? And she's like, well, about fifteen thousand, wow, fifteen thousand usually, versus five thousand, and so I just thought there were quite a bit of people, and, you know, in San Diego, and yes, I enjoyed the walking, it certainly was not the San Diego weather I was expecting. Fortunately, I did bring a jacket, I think, I think Chris had mentioned that you may want to. So I did pack one thing it was gonna be for the plane, but I'm glad I did, because most of the time we, we actually were walking in most places, because I did from, or we ended up staying to the convention center, it was about ten minutes long, twelve minutes longer than most.
But I was a little sad as a baseball fanatic that I was standing right next to Penn Coast State, you could almost look down into it, and there was the strike. You know, the, no advancement.
So with that, I'll transition into a future board agenda and announcements, so we do have the OSBA conference in July, so who would be going to NSBA, I encourage you to look at going to, to the, to OSBA. Just for us to continue building capacity amongst ourselves and, and becoming more efficient as a board and support.
It's in Ben, right?
It's in Ben, and if you want to go, Serakin might issue you, hotels are a little bit farther out, they're getting filled up. I am going to the pre-session on Friday, which is going to be a presentation, and they'll carry some of it through on Saturday and Sunday, but it's how to do, I forget what they say, it's community engagement that matters, and it should be a very interesting session.
In, in Holly, like, if, if kids are, like, if you want to take your kids, I took mine's last year, we just played in the pool bowl during our session, so it's a whole one.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't want to play.
They live in the pool.
Yeah.
Uh, do you know the dates off the top of your head?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna probably tell you.
Probably like the first week of it. Probably in July or something.
Something like, it's right, well, it asks me right after the four, so let's see, it is the seventh, seven, I'm going down the seventh, so it's Friday, eight, nine, ten. July. I got a mailer for it, I don't know if you all.
Yes, so, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
So then we also, I'm going along with announcements, Sarah did send out a signup sheet for us to sign, I said, I said everyone in the room, sign up for, uh, yearly year celebrations at schools. So there's morning ones and there's after-school ones, and we can sign up for those.
Before we move to announcements, can I add a future board agenda?
Oh, yeah, it's together, I just.
Oh, sorry, okay, I didn't, there's. Me?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, the, just get an update on negotiations of the Montessori school at the next one.
Yes. Yeah, so we need an update on that, we need, also, she sent out the invitation, was James, the invitation from the SRO listening session. They asked us to our Z P's, we didn't want to go.
So that they know if there's a quorum, not that we're gonna be discussing, that they just think there's a quorum.
What was that, the twenty-seventh? Twenty-sixth.
That's the first date, and there's probably gonna be another one, but, you know, right now, that's the one that we've identified.
Right, the twenty-sixth, that's wrapped up.
And then there's also going to be one in Spanish that I'd like to attend, so if I get that calendar, I could, I might go down. I'll use it during, I don't know why I was looking at it.
The communication that just went out yesterday, maybe about the SRO community engagement, do you know when that ends?
The one I whispered some?
No, the SRO.
I, I think it's a survey, yeah, I haven't done it.
Oh.
Or I would know more. Athena just sent it out, I think, yesterday, but somebody asked me today.
I'll get an email.
I said, I don't know.
I'll get an email to confirm.
Yeah, because there's the SRO listening session, the person that I whispered some, and then there's the one, the survey one that she sent out, he's ten and ten with us.
Of course.
Right.
One more thing, Chair, is that we're going to need board members to sign up for upcoming graduation ceremonies. I, we have a little bit of time, but Sarah should be sending that out soon, because we have restroom, Barlow, Spring Water Trail, and the adult development program, so we'd like to attend, you know, multiple. Unfortunately, the calibration is going to be actually on a work session night, so usually we have, you know, a board member or two that would like to attend, we will have representation, as Matt people participate on behalf of the school district, since I will be with all of you, and then usually John and Tracy.
What's that, remember that name?
It's the calibration where
The Cal Celebration.
Cal Celebration.
Oh, I'm like, why are we calibrating?
I know.
Cal.
Cal.
Well, and MEWA also often invites one of us to come and, and sit with their board members and hand out poems for that, and that's quite a celebration, that is quite an event.
Dr. Gray will get us the dates and things, and we'll make sure that we get that information, so we can be able to attend that.
And so just, you know, kind of doing a procedure thing, when you do the, the big high schools at Memorial College, you get parking, you get to go, you're there, you're up on stage, you're heading out the pockets, you know, it's an evening event, it's a good party. Yeah, it's, it's quite, it's quite the emotional ride.
And we usually have you do one or the other, we have one that starts at five, and the next one that starts at eight, eight-thirty, so that, you know, because it's a long time to be up on the stage. Your superintendent will be on the stage for both, and hopefully he can keep his legs moving.
Yeah.
Better knees, don't say.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I do have, you know, somebody who's going to be graduating, so at eight-thirty graduation, so it's gonna be pretty, pretty fun.
Hey, keep it popular.
Yep, absolutely.
So I think if we don't have any more announcement, I think.
We do have, just as an FYI, we do have an all-day bargaining that's coming up next week, and so we are optimistic.
So when will we get another update?
Um, after that.
After that.
The May fifth work session, we'll go into executive.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll have good news, that'll be April twenty-seventh, so eight-thirty to four-thirty at West Fresham. And we're, we're excited, we're ready to do it.
Anything else, any other questions, any other additions, comments? Then we are adjourned, we're meeting at eight-thirty-six.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.